All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Uh, we're gonna do it a little different. We've got one out sick today. Katie was under the weather, so she's not gonna be here. So, to establish a quorum, we're gonna have Counselor Roden do our roll call for us.
Okay, Counselor O. Thomas?
Here.
Counselor Evans?
Here.
Counselor Roden is present. Counselor Myfala? Counselor Ellis?
Here.
Counselor Ford?
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, tonight, the indication's gonna be given by Counselors Thomas and the Pledge of Allegiance by Counselor Roden. If you would, uh, stand with us at this time.
Father, we thank you again for the opportunity to be given us to come here to these, uh, chambers and discuss our community and its business this evening. Father, we pray, Lord, uh, for any decisions that you've made this evening, that you just, uh, guide us by your wisdom and just be with us through the entire proceedings tonight and give us safe, good travel after the meeting. Prepare this through Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See? All right, uh, approval of the agenda, and I'm gonna remind everybody, tonight is the first night that we are live streaming. So, this is on YouTube, I think. So, for those of you that are just now visiting, we're gonna watch the P's and Q's that's going around. Um, we need an approval of the gen- uh, of the agenda. Counselors might add, uh, items or delete any items. We need a motion, uh, to approve, as submitted or amended.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second by Steve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, introduction of special guests. We've got, uh, just a few here that I had, uh, anticipated that might have been here. Um, we've got, uh, Mr. Wes that's visiting. He's gonna get up, uh, during the public comments section. He's got a proposal that he wants to make to counsel. He's, uh, representing, uh, Huntsville Summit, correct Wes? Uh, and he'll, he'll elaborate on that whenever it comes to the public, uh, comments section of this. Uh, we also have Pastor Lonny Seiler here with us in the front row. Um, he had come by, and I hate that he missed us last, last month. We was a day late, a dollar short, as they say, and so he's here, uh, this month, uh, to observe. Um, anybody else wanna stand up and tell us who you are?
Yeah, I'm Nancy Lee, we're up in North West Arkansas, Economic Development District.
I'll shake your hand and forgot to introduce all the terms.
Oh, that's okay.
Thank you very much for showing up. Anybody else? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that I'm sort of resonating with some issues that just, uh, my name's Tom Shepherd.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. We will, we will, um, the thing that I'll remind everybody is in the public comments, uh, section of, um, of this, we'll get to that part. Uh, if you'll keep your comments to about five minutes or so, that would be fantastic. I know Wes, you have a presentation, so we will allow for that, but, uh, typically, if you don't care, keep it to about five minutes on the public comments section. All right, uh, special order of business. Um, we don't have any. Approval of minutes of the meeting in May eight. Are there any corrections, alterations, alterations or deletions?
Make a motion, we accept, we disseminate.
Second. Got a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Um, now, we move to the public comments. So, let's see. Are you Brady Wes? Okay. Wes, do you wanna come on up and? Present?
That's 'cause I thought you were talking to me. My name's Wes. Uh, my wife and I, my wife's Natasha, she's here with me today too. Um, we moved to Huntsville about six years ago, about two weeks ago, so it's our anniversary, basically. And we have three children, um, and we have been blessed to be here. I'm also the associate pastor at First Baptist Church Huntsville. Just to clarify, what presenting today is completely separate from the church. This is not affiliated with the church. Um, I've also been a cross-country coach, uh, for Huntsville Cross-Country Team for two years, um, and we have completely fallen in love with this community and we're blessed to be a part of it and look forward to raising our children here. Huntsville Summit, as Travis introduced earlier, um, is, is a dream that Natasha and I began about four years ago, and in this past year, I've felt the freedom to be able to pursue it and, and try to make it a reality. Um, this is not a matter of if Huntsville Summit is going to become a, a reality, it's a matter of when. Uh, we really do believe that we are to pursue this wholeheartedly. Um, it is a faith-based nonprofit rock climbing gym with an outdoor adventure after-school program. Our mission is that we desire to send the next generation to new heights by equipping them to be overcomers. What exactly is it that we're trying to encourage the, the next generation to overcome? There are three things that we want to pursue. The first is poverty. Uh, many of you guys know the average income of Madison County is forty-one thousand dollars for two working parents in one household, and the cost of living is actually closer to fifty thousand. So, those presents, uh, some pretty dynamic, uh, problems. Um, we want to be a resource that parents can use to help encourage their students to make good choices and to excel academically. We also then want to provide a place for the community to enjoy unique and fun activity. The next thing we think that we can overcome or that we can train, uh, the next generation to overcome is adversity. If you've spent any time in the outdoors where they're camping, backpacking, fishing, hunting, running, rock climbing, you know the importance of adapting to each situation and taking adversity in stride. We want to take lessons that can be learned outdoors and equip students with the skills necessary to overcome adversity in every area of their life. The last thing that we want to overcome is failure. Rock climbing is a unique, in many ways, in comparison to other sports. In rock climbing, when you fail, the more you fail, the more you succeed. This is called projecting, and I won't get into all the details of it, but when you're trying to climb a route that is harder than what you can climb, you project it. And every time you fail to climb that route, you work on, that you're working on, you reevaluate every single move to determine why you failed. You determine what you need to do to make things easier, to not make the same mistakes. You might fail a hundred times before you climb the route successfully, but failure then is a part of the process, not the end of the process. Learning to overcome failure then is learning to be successful. So, why are we here? I believe that we both have similar dreams, as you counsel men and women and Huntsville Summit. You have a dream that you desire to see the square grow in businesses that bring people together, that make Huntsville unique, and that communicate that you care about the families in Madison County. We also have a dream to establish a faith-based nonprofit rock climbing gym that will bring people together, that makes Huntsville unique, and communicate that we care for the county's families, for Madison County. How can these dreams come true? Today, I would like to begin the conversation about pursuing a low-cost five-year lease with the Bashing Building. This will allow us to become established and to help eliminate the initial overhead cost of a building. Now, I know the conversations have been had of, of what you guys want to do to the exterior aspects of the building, and that really would not get in the way whatsoever with what our dreams are for the Bashing Building, and I actually think it would be really cool to do what you guys are planning to do so far. We believe by partnering together, both of our dreams can come true, and the economical impact that this could have in Huntsville is, is gonna be hard to calculate because of how big it is. Our plans then, if you could show the video, would be to turn the Bashing Building into a rock climbing gym. This is actually the, uh, the dimensions of the Bashing Building. I went and took measurements, and we sent this to a company that makes rock climbing walls. Um, and so this is the back part of the, the Bashing Building, not the front part. Um, the back part being behind that wall that's put up, that, that exterior, or the interior wall that's put up in that first part of the building. And then it enters into the sidebar of the building, uh, where the tall ceilings are. Our prayer and our hope is that by establishing this rock climbing gym, that eventually it would create enough funding to do a free after-school program for families. Not only that, in this store, uh, it would be, in this, this business, uh, we'll have a pro-shop for outdoor goods, um, where the benefits, the, the proceeds of that help, help support Madison County and Huntsville Summit. Um, and then a potential arcade. Um, one of the things that we're pursuing is that we're not gonna turn anybody away. And so, if somebody tries to afford the gym and they can't, then we are gonna ask that they do four hours of community service in order to pay for the cost of their monthly membership. Um, one idea that we have is that that membership, uh, or that community service is that we provide a date night for families in Madison County where our students that are looking for, uh, free membership have to go through CPR training and get certification so that we can provide childcare. Um, but the catch being that those families do a date night in Madison County, so that we're spending the money here in town instead of going over to Fayetteville. Um, thank you so much for your time, and I look forward to seeing how we can partner together. Um, do you guys have any questions? So, not yet. We do not have funding yet. We're still in the process of getting our nonprofit, uh, status. Um, recently found out that the Madison County Health Coalition is an umbrella program, and so we're beginning the conversations of, uh, what that might look like if we were to pursue funding through them first, and then once our status gets approved, uh, then we move forward. Um, there's a, a rock climbing gym in Memphis that is doing the same thing, and I talked to him, the founder, and, um, the one that's over it right now, and he said, because we're faith-based, it actually opens up so many more doors for funding. And he said, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when, and, and look seeking out those resources. We have a, a three-step process that we're hoping to pursue. I do believe that there's enough interest for something like this in Huntsville, um, to where we're first gonna start by just opening it up to the community, uh, once we get that nonprofit status or, or under the umbrella, um, open it up to community to allow people to buy into this, so whether they can only afford five dollars or if they wanna donate a million dollars, whatever the case be, um, that's that. Once we're, uh, after that season, we pursue North West Arkansas, and then we'll pursue the nation as a whole as far as grants go.
Now, are you just planning to sit in or not?
Yes, I would love to sit down and have a conversation about what our budget would be, um, what our needs are, the cost of what it would take to climb, to build this climbing gym, and to begin negotiating what those costs might be.
I think it's awesome, anything that...
All of it is a special meeting. And all of it may be a special meeting.
Don't, don't, don't we have a, uh, arson rec, commission already? Can we not use that same?
It depends on what group you wanna put that.
We actually have that Bashing Building Committee that we...
I mean, that, to me, that sounds, that sounds perfect.
I think we should leave it up to him, once you come up with more data.
Yeah.
If you feel like you got enough to come back to give us, uh, good feedback.
That'd be great.
We're still a couple months out on finishing the first project, the first stage of the renovations, so I'll give you some time to...
Uh, that'd be great. Um, we were hoping that our website would be live, um, today, but our, our person who's making that wasn't able to finish it, so within the next week or two, we'll have a live website that we will send to you guys, that you can also send to other people as far as interest goes, so... Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate you, Wes.
Thank you. Wes, I'll just wait on you to holler at me, and we'll, we'll go from there and set up a meeting, and as you come talk to the commission. All right. Thank you. These are just pictures of that video, if you guys want. Okay, thank you. Hey, still public comments? Anybody need to get up and say anything? Anything that needs to be brought before council? Go right ahead. Come on up to the microphone if you don't care, please, sir.
Good presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, start with, my name is Tom Shepherd. I'm one of only two homeowners on Pump Station, the rest are all rentals. I've never had an issue living there, but someone lodged a complaint. I have a, uh, fourteen-by-seventy mobile home that I'm gonna use as storage, and, uh, the guy didn't put it where I wanted it. I was on, he said he couldn't get in there, the delivery guy, so he dropped it. It's on my property, and I talked to Ms. Thomas, and I don't know what it is that lodged a complaint. Maybe I could solve it that way. I'm not gonna live in it. I've got a little under four acres. In order to have two residents, you gotta have four acres or more. Not gonna live in it. I had talked to, uh, Chief Thomas way back before he was chief about buying one of them steel buildings to put storage, you know? And, uh, so I'm half in the city, like three-quarters city, and then a little bit in the county, okay? I don't have blacktop, I can't get gravel on my road, uh, but the rental homes all have it, and as long as I'm up here, the other homeowners, uh, Norcross, he worked for a city, those trailers, if you wanna take a drive by, they should be condemned. And I'm get, I feel like I'm being harassed. I, you know, I serve my country, I, I don't know what I'm doing wrong. I always used to sell drugs out of them places, you know, back in the day, you know? And I keep my property up. I, I don't know what I'm doing wrong, you know? I could be my neighbor, she's a renter, she wanted me to buy the house, and I didn't want it 'cause it was all full of mold, but anyway, that's, I just wanna address that and see where I'm going. 'Cause it was, uh, she called me this morning, Ms. Thomas, said it was a, uh, June tenth deadline. So, what happened, the guy took the tires off the axles, okay? I can get it moved, I'd like to get it moved, 'cause it, it's right near a pond that I have, but it's on my property, you know? That's where, if I had it closer to the mound, I could run electric, and have lights in it, but I gotta get somebody with a dozer, get the tires on, and get it moved. But I'm not gonna live in it. I don't have no water, hook-up cord, or nothing, you know? Just for storage. She can get a barn bill for forty thousand, you know? But anyway, that's all I gotta say.
Mr. Shepherd, so where, what about your axles? How long do you think it'll take to get your axles and your wheels?
Um, well, the axles are on there.
You just gotta get wheels for it.
Yeah, and I'm, you know I'm as well as I do, Mr. Goodnight, he's gonna help me, and I'd say, if the weather don't, you know, rain and it's all soggy, I'd say a week to ten days we'd get it moved, but I don't know why I have to move it. Uh, it's not bothering nobody there, you know what I mean? I'd like to move it though, that was the intent, but the guy said he couldn't make the turn to put it by the barn, that way it'd be close to run electric. But I don't see what's wrong with where it's at, but I had to leave it. Uh, my intent is to move it. I just can't pick it up, you know? My four-wheel-drive truck won't pull it either. If anybody knows somebody, you know what I mean? I went to all these, uh, trailer places that, you know, they're all booked up moving stuff, you know? But, uh, I'd be, you know, to use one of them, if anybody's got one they know, you know? They're gonna solve that problem. I, it's on my property, it's not an ISO or like them trailers down the road. I don't know what's, you know? It's decent, but anyway, that's, that's all I gotta say on that issue. I hope I get it worked out, otherwise I'll have to sell it or something, I don't know. Thank you.
The city wrote a letter for request of the zoning violation of the accessory building in the front yard. I have been in contact with Mr. Shepherd for several months, um, and he gave me the deadline and said it would be moved by the tenth of June. I called and reminded him this morning that that had passed. Um, the agreement with me was that he would have it moved by that day, and there was almost two months' time for him to get it moved. Um, the city is zoning regulations, it's okay in the backyard, or it's okay gone, it just can't stay in the front yard.
I also had a heart attack in the meantime. Got a pacemaker, but I didn't find one. Jennifer, how long ago did you send the letter, you say?
We sent the letter back in March.
I never received it. I got another issue with the mail. I don't know about you all.
Everybody does. Just send it back, and you can work out another date with him.
I work every time, man. I didn't get my mail.
We have a proposal, uh, on the, on the table here from Counselor Roden. He said, can we not just send it back to the Planning Commission and have them establish a date on when, when we can, we can... Just work with Mr. Shepherd? Work with Mr. Shepherd on, on that date?
I'll do my best to move it on Sunday.
I can dress that Wednesday.
Okay, all right. Matter of fact, they say, Mr. Shepherd, that they can address it Wednesday. That is our ad hoc meeting for Planning Commission. So, this, they'll, they'll...
I won't work at the law, I don't wanna...
Well, they will, they will work, uh, um, diligently to come up with a, uh, a resolve for you, okay?
If anybody's got a person that can move it, I'd be more than ready to pay them, and I'm gonna add it on Friday.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. You're welcome. Thank you, Mayor. Anybody else? We're gonna introduce you whenever the economic development...
I can walk out or we can wait till the resolution.
Okay. All right, fantastic, okay. Let's wait till the resolution.
People from Cedar Bluff, do you?
Yeah. And I'm gonna address that in, in my marriage report, because we had another meeting. Do, does anybody from Cedar Bluff, y'all come in a little late? Do y'all have anything y'all wanna say or talk about? Okay. And we're gonna start bringing red together. I see y'all as much as I see the employees here, so... All right, um, hearing no more public comments or nobody that wants to speak, we'll move on to our city department reports. Uh, everybody was provided, and your email is in the packet, um, with all these reports. There's some of them that, that obviously you have to go through your packet to, to get. Um, let's start with, uh, Chief Thomas at the Police Department. What you got for Chief?
Mayor members of the council, uh, for some reason, the, uh, the printout was not formatted correctly, and some of that was kind of with agency assist and the, uh, the totals for the month, but, uh, pretty, pretty normal month for the beginning of summer. Things, things get harder, we get busier, trying to be proactive. You can see the proactive columns there. Uh, what was taken off was, um, the agency assist, we had sixty, and the total number was four-twenty-seven, if, if you're wondering, and that's, uh, you know, that's, that's a pretty average month for us. Uh, we finished a firearms instructor school that was, um, involved all the regional agencies, including our Madison County Sheriff's Office. It was a really good training out on our firing range. We used our facilities here, training facilities at the Police Department, all went really well. I got a lot of really positive feedback from some other agencies, and I look forward to working with them, some, some brother and sister agencies around here with training, lots of different types of training, so it's nice to have a lot more. Uh, county added two firearms instructors to their department, we added one, and that was, that's, that's a very positive thing. We also are working on, speaking of training, scheduling training throughout the month, uh, the month of, uh, school vacation, summer vacation, with putting together some pretty elaborate training scenarios with, uh, not just our fire department and our local brother and sister agencies and law enforcement, but hopefully to include air evac, um, uh, street departments, our, our water departments, and we've began the, the process of that. So, it's gonna be a busy summer for training, we're excited about that. Uh, to speak to the Cedar Bluff, uh, community, we did receive, I personally received some ordinances on Friday in regards to some of the issues that were brought up at one of the previous council, parking, noise ordinances and so on. Um, I haven't had a chance to look at them yet, but I wanna look them over, and hopefully this week, maybe get with Ms. Fritz and the mayor and see what route we can take. They seem to be, from what I was told, they seem to be what we're looking for, so, um, nothing extremely stringent, but very, uh, common sense-oriented solutions that I think that we can probably put into place. And, yeah, that's, that's really about it for the Police Department, just a pretty busy month. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief. You have been busy, and I applaud all the effort that you've undergone this month. I mean, I know it's been a hectic month, and, and you just keep on diving in, and, and might be more ponds for yourself, so that's, that's impressive.
Good crew. Got a good crew.
All right. Hearing no questions, move on to the Street Department. Scott, what you got?
First of all, we, uh, we're able to get on paid paid, and I'll pay, uh, some of this, and, uh, then besides maintenance, um, brush hogging mowing, finishing up all the brush from the wear. We have to project cleaning ditches and, and, uh, COVID issues, that's about the thing, and, uh... And also, uh, the mayor had, uh, sent me an email back previously about, uh, patching potholes here in the city to keep up with, uh, all the ones that we've got, so many from gas and water and in our own personal, where it's here on the streets. We've got a recycler that we're gonna use in the future, but right now, there is a guy that had emailed the mayor, and if she had forwarded it to me, that he can come in one day and patch up to a hundred potholes with one truckload of asphalt, and he gave us some, um, locations where he had previously done work and gave us their, there was a few other cities that I'd called and talked to them, and they said that they were really, uh, satisfied with the job this company had done with the cost of it, which mainly can be done in one day, but the best part about it would be, I'll take care of them one day for one day, and then let us get, have time to get caught up on patching any holes in the future that have to be done as needed, but anyway, I think it'd really be a good thing to look into when we can, make them bring a whole truckload of asphalt in at once and, and have the number of people they need to service whatever area we need done in one day and be gone, and have actual asphalt in the, I mean, take care of all the two-pray patches.
Running numbers on it, with all, all council members here present, running the numbers on it, I thought it'd be something that, you know, I told Scott to kinda check on it. Um, it is very cost-effective, that's probably why he's, we've had a hard time catching up with this gentleman. Um, it's about six thousand dollars for an eighteen-ton load of asphalt, covers a hundred big patches, it helps us get cocked back up to where we can actually use our new asphalt machine, uh, for six thousand bucks. That's a pretty good deal. Uh, we're gonna spend all, if, if we were buying new asphalt, we would spend somewhere in the neighborhood of forty-five hundred dollars just on that same load of asphalt. So, they bring their equipment, they do it all, uh, we get everything done in one fell swoop, so it's, uh, time is money, so that's why I think that this is something that we will, uh, proceed with unless there's any, any questions or any comments or any concerns from y'all's side of it. That's good.
I did hear from you, hey, you said it could be until Wednesday.
Fantastic. I was beginning to think he's a ghost.
Where all we live in, in a...
Did you talk to Scott? You talked to Frank Grove?
Uh, he raised in Rabbit.
He raised in Rabbit, and they all had, they, they all had high regards for the gentleman.
Rabbit's using the last two years, ain't gonna use them again next year, but he raised, oh, yeah, they all said, both of them said that they, everything they did was what they said they would be in.
Scott, you've got your budget, so...
Right.
Uh, just Wednesday was showing what we need and, and, uh, this is, and I have to tell everybody this, this is my first summer, first starting summer as being mayor, and I will say this, and I have to say it on behalf of all of our employees here that are not here tonight as well as are here, this is the hardest working bunch of people. There are no out times, there's no downtime. I mean, it is something constantly, and I am just absolutely impressed, and I've worked in municipalities before, and I'm gonna say that this is the hardest working bunch I've ever been around. They take pride in what they do, and they make good decisions every day. Makes our jobs easy, makes my job easy, and as counselors, it makes our jobs easy. So, Scott, thank you for everything you're doing, I know we pull you from one, uh, extreme to the other. Um, Scott may be paving roads one day and knocking out a bird nest the next, so, I mean, it's, it's always, it's always something, uh, with him, so kudos to you guys, everyone that's here. Thank you for all the hard work that you, that you do do.
They also spent about three days out on the range, getting it prepared for our, our firearms instructor school, securing it with new pipe fence and mowing, weed eating, and cleaning, and, I mean, it's a lot of work, it's a big facility out there, so I appreciate them for that.
And you part-time help, so you're a pretty good job.
Yeah.
Scott said all you've got?
Yeah.
Water department?
Hello, Sean?
Hello, Counsel.
And I wanna give you an update on the tank. Construction's on schedule, they've almost completed the foundation, all the new twelve-inch line to the tank is installed. We're expecting delivery of the tank panels the first week of July, and we're hoping for final construction to be wrapped up no later than mid-August. So, that's great news. Uh, throughout the past month, I've been working with Mr. Jeff Chambers, he's part of the Property Owners Association at Cedar Bluff. We had a punch list of about sixty meter boxes, hydrants, manholes that were either damaged or left, either too high or too low, after the home construction was completed. We've been out there and addressed all those items, I met with him last week, and at that point, they were satisfied, and we're just keep working with them if they find more problems. And then I brought, uh, Mr. Bob Cruz, or sorry, Bob Wright from Cruising Associates with me. Uh, last year, we talked about regional water having rate increase for a big construction... Last year, we talked about regional water having rate increase for a big construction project. At that point, I reported we were looking at about seventy cents per thousand. That number has increased a little bit since then. And he's come along to kind of go over the details and explain to council what that means.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Bob Wright with Cruz and Associates was in front of y'all last year when we were doing the financing for the city. And I have recently met with the water and sewer commission to kind of update them on the, on your wholesale supplier. And I told them that, you know, since I've been in front of you, we've handled y'all's financing. I certainly want to come and answer any questions as to what's going on because it is a significant rate increase coming down the pipe. I wanted to show you the numbers as to how we came up with this. And I've worked with that wholesale district for quite a while. I also worked with the rural district that is going to have an impact as well. And we're going to go and report to the rural district and actually had COVID running through their office. So that's been postponed. I'm not sure when we're going to remeet. But I did meet a month ago with the city water and sewer commission. I've updated some numbers because we've actually had some good positive feedback since we met with your system. And I wanted to just show you what I've handed out. This is your wholesale system. They have two loans outstanding. They have a loan, a bond issued from 2016 that we did for them that is about six hundred and ten, six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars per year principal and interest. And they've got a core of engineer contract. That's their water allocation contract out of Beaver Lake. And it's actually based on an annual amortization based on a mortgage, essentially at 2.875%. And they pay a hundred and six thousand dollars per year all the way up to 2049. So their current mortgage on their system is 717 to 720 dollars per year principal interest. They, as you're probably aware, they have gone for years as probably the cheapest wholesale system in the state, certainly one of the cheapest in the country. They have maintained that rate, but it's caught up to them. They've got to do a pretty big expansion to be able to supply additional water to the city and to the county. So it's about 14 million. Bids have not been let yet, but if they come in a little bit higher, we've got a little bit of cushion. I wouldn't be surprised with what we've seen on recent bids. That it comes in higher than 14 million, we might be standing in front of you again. That's one thing we can't control. But the engineers are still estimating 14 million. I just left the board meeting, they had a five o'clock board meeting, so I was there and then I came over here. The second page, and this is what I actually showed to the water and sewer commission last month. As part of our job for the wholesale system, we want to get it as low of a annual principal and interest as possible because the lower the mortgage, the lower the impact is on your citizens and citizens out in the county. We did not anticipate that we could get credit enhancement on the bond issue that we're doing. Credit enhancement would be a bond insurer out of New York that, for instance, they would not qualify Carol Boone water because of a concentration of risk, concentration of a Tyson plant over Green Forest. So they didn't think the credit of Carol Boone water system wholesale was worthy. I took it by myself because it's a significant savings. I've been working them, I've been supplying them substantial amount of information. We did get confirmation last week that we do get that transaction insured with bond insurance. It's going to save y'all, save the system about a million eight in interest over the life alone. So what I showed to the commission on this second page here is if we did this 14 million dollar project, that the total principal and interest on the system on the far right side would be about a million 647. And if you'll flip over to the next to last page, which is highlighted the impact of getting bond insurance instead of a million 647 per year principal and interest, it's going to be a million 470. So it's almost $200 per year. We've reduced that mortgage by chasing that aspect of it. So that's a, that's a big win for the rural district or the wholesale district. And obviously a huge win for your ratepayers. It's still going to be a significant rate increase. And if you look at the last page, here's what we're looking at. As Sean said, the estimate, you know, probably a year ago was maybe seventy cents. We had to wait until they got their 2022 audit. You know, we were, they were actually ready to do the rate increase in the fall of last year. Timing didn't work out and we had to wait until they got their audit. So if you looked at that column there, 2022 draft, they collected revenues from the city and the county of a million eight eighty-five. From the engineer, they estimate that they need a dollar twenty rate increase on top of what they're already charging. They're charging a dollar fifty-seven per thousand gallons right now. And that is, and I'll show you on the last page, that's well below what other systems are charging. But it's going to take another dollar twenty per thousand to generate a million four fifty-seven, which would give them 3.35 million dollars in total revenue. They would operate the system for a million seven. It would leave them a million five seventy-seven in operating income. When you look at the, at an audit, and just like on your, on the city water and sewer audit, you look at it under the operating expense, there's a depreciation line item. That is not a cash item, that's an accounting measure. So you add that back into the mix. So basically what the collections were last year plus the increase at a dollar twenty per thousand, they would be left with 2,086,000 dollars to pay the mortgage. If you look down on the next to last line, as I went through, if they had 2,860 in the mortgage, it's going to be a million 472. Their margin or their coverage is 1.42. That's, that's pretty healthy. Gives them a little bit of a cushion in case that, that construction cost goes up that they can absorb some of that without passing anything else along. We'll just have to see how that comes into play. But that's how the engineers came out with a dollar twenty increase to generate enough revenue to pay for this 14 million dollar expansion. Last page, how does that compare to your peers, your ratepayers, you know, close by? And I penciled in down below actually, Two Ton Water, another customer of mine. They actually just went this past year and they are currently at $2.80 per thousand gallons. They also charge for every meter on the system, a dollar fifty. So for every retail meter out there, there's a dollar fifty additional charge per month. They've already voted and approved on January 1st to 24th, they're going to 320. And they're going to 3.45, $3.45 per thousand in 2025. Beaver Water, that's a unicorn, that's a different animal. They're at a dollar forty-six. They don't own any distribution like Madison County does. They only have three. Carol Boone is going to 220, Madison County, 157 going to 277. So you'll be below where Two Ton is right now and well below where they're going to in the next couple of years. And if you look at that list, and that list was from a state agency, Springfield, Missouri is at 280, Elrata, Kansas, 285. You can just go down that list and kind of see where Madison County is going to be once this rate increase kicks in. The resolution they just passed at their meeting this afternoon is that rate increase would kick in on August 1st of this year. They're cognizant of the fact, not only on mom and pop, your ratepayers, but also on Butterball. That's a significant rate increase, depending on how you pass that through. That's a potential significant rate increase on Butterball. So they wanted to try to give us much time for, you know, for notification to Butterball so they can kind of work that in. They, and Randy has supplied to you and we're going to get an electronic version of a new water supply contract. Y'all have an updated that since the nineties. So it's just kind of brought up to date and it spells out the $2.77 is what the new rate would be. We'll need, and I think he gave it to you probably three weeks ago, two or three weeks ago. And if y'all don't have a copy of that, we can certainly give it to you so you can take a look. But both the rural system and the city, those updated contracts will need signed and returned back to Madison County. And once we have that, we can get the bonds, the interest rates locked in. That's kind of where we stand. As I've told the commission, it's, you know, that is a significant increase. You know, percentage wise, it's pretty big. The need is there, they've kind of pushed that off for quite a while. But we're really close to getting everything locked in. And I wanted to answer any questions that y'all might have. If your citizens come in and is like, why, I don't know what the water and sewer commission is going to do on your rate structure, on how to pass that through. But you'll probably have some comments from citizens. And so I wanted y'all to be aware, you know, as to why that's coming down the pipe.
Any questions? Comments? So it looks like it's from what we had anticipated, it looks like about another 29% increase on added to the seventy cents that we were.
Yep. And that's, we're hoping the bids come in and hold close to that 14 million so we don't have to adjust. I would assume that in discussions with the board, they'll probably look at a, after this is done, probably modifying to where they'll add in an inflation adjusted annual increase so that they don't come in and hit y'all with such a big, big increase in the future. You know, so you don't have to absorb it all at once. If they did a three or five percent per year, which most wholesale systems do, that might help y'all out budget wise.
I'm over waiting on they work this time and get back over to Baker or Madison County Water District. What's the chance of the interest rates going back up? You said you're trying to hold them down as much as you possibly can.
Yeah, and that's, obviously there's a lot going on. And I thought about putting in, as I've shown y'all in the past and I showed the commission kind of what interest rates have been doing. And this is kind of an important week, the Fed's meeting on Wednesday. Not expected to raise rates this time, but there's some economic data coming out tomorrow that might sway their opinion. Rates are holding steady. Tenure treasury is still around 3.7, 3.72. And if that holds here in the next two or three weeks, the numbers that we've got here are pretty accurate. You wake up and things happen, you know, across the pond and it's like you can't control, you know. So we've seen some pretty, you know, big swings. General consensus is latter part of this year into next year, we do move into a recession, that rates will, you know, potentially come down. Costs continue to go up on that project. So it's, we haven't known right now that that dollar twenty will cover. So that's what we're trying to get locked in where we can take all the movements on.
What's anticipated time to get the documents to us soon?
The contract, we're going to fill in y'all's name on the, there's a couple of blanks. We're going to fill that in, the bond attorney will send that over to Randy Shin, who will get that, he's going to hand deliver it to you and also email it out so you'll have it. So you'll probably have a copy of that tomorrow. So we're probably a couple of weeks from locking in that rate.
Okay.
This Thursday? Yeah. You'll definitely.
Any other questions for Bob?
Sorry to be the bearer of bad news, I didn't mean with all the positive going on here, but.
There is a positive on us. We have already increased a certain amount already, so we're not going to. So there really isn't, I mean, it's not like we're going to do a dollar twenty more. We've already done.
And then Sean's doing his due diligence and discussing about Butterball, which is our largest consumer of water, obviously. So kudos to you for that, Sean.
Thank you all for your time and we will stay in touch. If there's any modifications or changes, I'd, you know, something in favor, I'll be glad to come over and give any updates as we move forward. But like I said, I hope we're within about three weeks to solve this and level it all out, so. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, fire department.
All right. This is, I have been working for this, been looking forward to this for many years now.
Don't speak loudly.
Am I not speaking on the? Don't be dancing on this one. The fact that we have finally achieved, we have got to the point where come September 1st, the city's ISO rating will drop to a class three. I would be talking to your insurance people now and getting prepared for this. I know Mayor Dawson, when you moved into town, saw the difference in ISO ratings. This should be a significant drop in homeowners insurance, business insurance, anybody else's inside the city. Now, if you are outside the city in our fire district, they're still in a class five. There's some other issues with water delivery and things. But that has been something we have, you've had to listen to me about for an extended period of time we were working toward, but we have got there. And so I'm, I am proud of it, looking in that, what I shared with you in my written report. You know, the areas that we have improved in, things I've talked to you about before. One was the training. Remember, ISO is concerned with fire protection, you know, because that's what costs them money. So that's, that's what they look at. And they do not differentiate between a career department and a volunteer department. There is none of that. So it is strictly about the numbers and the data. And for us to make the kinds of improvements that we have made in the training. And again, I think I talked to you about it last month and the month before about the different kinds of training. There's eight thirty, there's certain kind of training we have to meet for act eight thirty-three just to receive that money, money. And then there's ISO, more NFBA standards. And that, that's a whole different ballgame. I did share that with you in last month's report. So our guys are going, we are sending them to training, we're doing the right kind of training with them. And they are putting in extensive hours trying to get that up. And so that, that was a big improvement for us, the community risk reduction. If you look at it, the, the one that is really, has consumed an enormous amount of my time over the last few years, if you look down at the Fire Prevention Code regulations, where we, our score went from a 2.76 or basically 28% to now we're at 100%. And that is, we have done a much better job and we are doing a much better job on anytime somebody is building something in the city, it has to go through the fire code review. And that's what we've been doing, is working through, going through all this stuff. So starting with the activity center and the CTE center and then working our way through and actually doing the code review, that was what made that big jump there, is making sure we're doing all of that. So that was a, that was a significant improvement and has, it's taken a lot of time, but it's paid off. And so I'm proud of that. The one area that we dropped in, which is out of our control to an extent, was the company personnel part. You know, the city, you know, we talked about, I would bring that up time after time in here about not having anybody during the day. You know, we were worried about not having, our volunteers were gone at work during the day. So the city did go through and hired us a couple of guys during the day to do what we talked about. Just to be able to get here, get a truck on scene full of water if we needed to. That helped. But one of the problems we've talked about before is some of the challenges that our automatic aid departments are going through right now. In the past, when we had a structured fire, whether it was Ridgeway Apartments, the square, you could expect to have a company from each of our automatic aids show up with personnel, people who would come in here. Those numbers augment our numbers. So when you're looking at the company personnel score, it's not only how many people do we have responding on that first alarm, it's how many of the other departments are sending people to assist us. As you well know, that's, that is a significant problem facing our outside departments right now, just having personnel able to show up and train. So that's why that number has dropped a little bit. Again, it's, you know, our numbers are pretty good right now, but that's, that is still one of the issues we're going to deal with coming up. So again, trying to help them, we've been there as we can. We've been working with some of the departments, trying to help them, but that's there. The ladder service, the one thing, and again, we'll address this when we get to the three to five year plan. Basically, when you're looking at ladder or service, and it says ladder service, but it's either a ladder truck or a service truck. We get credit for having a service truck as opposed to a ladder truck. The issue we're going to have is that as we have continued to build great growth, the size of the structures, anything that requires a 3,500 GPM flow or greater to put out a fire based upon their calculations. If you have five or more of those, then that requires you to have a ladder truck, okay? And when we did this and the rating came in, there has been several structures that have been built since then. If we get one more, right now we might be at that, over that number. But if we get one more of those, then we're going to have to move to have a ladder truck. more of those, then we're gonna have to move to having a ladder truck. And so as the growth comes in, that's something we just have to be aware of and be prepared for. And again, it'll be something I think that'll be for our strategic plan when we start looking at the future and what, what we need going on there. But as of right now, that's all good, you know, that's an exciting point for us and everybody that lives in the city here. Any questions about that report? Anything we need to address on that part? Hit a couple of other things real quick.
Good numbers.
Uh, I, I am very proud. Some of you have heard me mention this way too often, but I'm very proud of where we are. You know, when you think about where Huntsville, Arkansas is with our fire protection and how we're structured and how we do stuff to see where we rate, I'm very proud of that. And we saw, every time we sent our guys off to other people's training, you know, this week, this last week, we were at the Arkansas Fire Conference, and variety of training, I had chiefs and trainers from other departments everywhere else come up and just kind of give me unsolicited, positive remarks on our people that are down there working. We get that every time we send people places, so, you know, that's, that's been one of the great things about our fire department over the generations that has kind of set us apart from a lot of others, is our people do train. They want to train, they do train, they work hard at what they're doing, so I'm, I'm proud of that. I may glow a little bit, and for fluorescent Caucasian, it may blow a few people, but that's, will get you some shades. So if there's any questions about that, let me know. If you need the full report, we'll, we'll give you that, and we'll, we'll talk about that, we'll start working on class two next. Couple of things, we did have a, a call, I had some people asking me about it, and I know it's here on Facebook and Reddit things, the, the call at Boston Mountain, where we went out to assist the corner and Todd's people out there having to use our hazmat gear to go in to do, to do a recovery and that kind of stuff. One of the things that we've got to work on is, we got into it, we don't have, several of our folks that are hazmat trained, you know, it comes down, basically, there's a couple of us that are still qualified to go into the suits and do some things. So we're gonna continue to work on that, but, but that, Todd's, Todd's people did a really good job of getting that area cordoned off and kind of getting us in, giving us what we needed to get things done. And, and we hear all the time, working together, I think we all do a fairly good job, and I'm always, I'm always proud. I hate to brag on Todd too much, you know, that long, but, but, but everybody did a really good job on that scene, that was a tough, that was a really tough scene to, to deal with, so I was proud of that. The broadband, the broadband committee, our first meeting will be June 28th, it can be an online meeting, I assume Mayor, you got, got that, so we'll be moving forward on that, and we'll visit some more before that date, about our needs and where we are.
Appreciate it, we've got two representatives. The judge and myself had sat down and thought it would be a good idea to incorporate people that talk that language a little better than us. We've got two representatives from the, Madison County telephone.
Got them on that list.
Yeah, will, will you, will you set up the meeting maybe here, or, or maybe down there even? Get with them to make sure that they're included in that, and let's, let's try to have some live bodies in that meeting.
Do this before June 28th?
Yeah, yeah, just, just for the June 28th meeting, so.
Okay, I'll do that. Okay. All right, well, those are the, those big ticket items, everything else is in the written report there. Is there any questions, comments, anything that I can address?
Questions?
I'm very proud of that.
Chief, good job. And that is a substantial, for those of you that don't know, the ISO rating for us, for our citizens of this city, is a tremendous savings per year. So that is gonna be a good thing for all of our citizens that are homeowners or, or business owners, business owners here in, in our city. So I'm, I'm really proud for the job that y'all have done on that. Thank you. Marriage report, just some quick hitters, I've got a lot of stuff to go over, so just some quick hitters here. Working on the mailbox for the front, y'all authorized me to buy the pre-standing mailbox for the front. We have met with the USPS manager, he came down and met with me, he's still got to solicit everybody on the square that might want to go in on that box with us, because apparently there was at one point in time a lot of hoopla over, mail being delivered around the square, so this will help solve some of that issue. We've got that going on. Proud to say that Chief Thomas and Scott got the bachelor building started today. It looks a little naked out there without the, without the awning, I must say, so made a lot of progress today, appreciate you guys and your dedication to that. As you all know, we have a gentleman that had, had met, he and his wife had met with Scott about three weeks ago, in regards to the purchase, so we will keep on entertaining anything that comes up, what Wes brought up today, and, and what this gentleman may bring, bring to the picture in regards to the purchase of the bachelor building. Dog kennel got started, and we'll parlay into that here in just a minute. Well, I'm really proud of the progress that we've got going on that, although we're right in the middle of a lot of things, Scott, but we gotta get those dogs from, from down there up here. So that's, that's been fantastic job on the progress that you made on that. We'll let everybody know, I will get back on the industrial park, I'm gonna reach out to another appraiser in regards to that. I, we have a local guy that knows a little more about, that we have one appraiser left that's local here in Madison County, Madison County, I should say, that will get to maybe look at that, and I think that maybe he can fit that in, in a timeframe that's more, more pleasing to us in regards to the industrial park plan. Next Wednesday, we're having a wage and salary commission meeting, and I have asked, and I'm gonna stop at this point, I would like, I've already talked to Leslie individually, and I've talked to Scott individually, would you two please serve on that commission for us? Okay, all right, so we've got, we're gonna add two commissioners to the wage and salary commission. Let's see here, went and got a preliminary on a water park, we're kind of putting the cart before the horse, so to speak, because we've still gotta do the closing here and a little bit of, of the purchase of the walking trail park down there on College. However, we wanna, we wanna kind of hit the ground running, so to speak, so we can kind of see where we're at and what grants are available and things of that nature. I have had several phone calls, and I've had several interest, interested parties in this. We met with a really nice gentleman that is a local guy out of Benton County, I believe, that does this for a living. So he has met with Sean and myself and Scott over there to kind of establish what we're wanting to do. He said, in, in his opinion, it was one of the best places he'd seen in a long time to put a water park in over there on, on that park. So that was good. Water consumption is not near as drastic as I thought it was gonna be, I was, I had a little bit hesitant on even trying to find that, even asking that question, but we did ask, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm proud of that. We'll just, like I say, we'll, we have a resolution to, ask a, a resolution to go ahead and, and buy, purchase the park from the county. It looks like we're gonna be a little bit under budget, y'all had mentioned, knock on wood, it's open, you had mentioned $25,000 purchase price. We had also included, basically, the closing survey as well as electrical. Our electricity came in at about $1,400 cheaper than what was anticipated. Our survey is not gonna be as drastic as what we had, had thought it was going to be. I really think that we're getting a lot of traction, a lot of help on this thing, so I think we're gonna come in just shot that $30,000 mark on the purchase of that property, so looking really forward to that. Big things, Hot Springs Rural Development Conference that we had about three weeks ago, very interesting, of course, this is my first one as mayor, and we ended up finding, hopefully, Sean, I'm gonna push you on the spot, did we ever decide if we're gonna qualify for any of that, what we brought back from?
Possibly, there's an application we need to submit before we get to that.
Okay. Well, it's, it's amazing to me, and thank goodness they have these, these events like, like this, and AML conference that I'm going to this week, to help educate slow folks like myself that don't know everything about everything. I think we found potentially $600,000 down there on that project, and we found possibly another million for the next year. So we're, we're asking Sean to proceed with caution on that deal, obviously, but there's some monies coming in there that, or potential monies coming in, I should say, that would really help out our community. So glad that they have those, have those for us. Let's see here, met with, and I'll kind of parlay this into the dog kennel, this last month, I met with the, with, actually, this month, I met with the veterinarian here, our local veterinarian. He, he and his wife have agreed to help us out to put together comprehensive plan, a game plan, in regards to our animal situation that we have here. Some of this guys, I'm gonna be bringing some different ordinances for you all. Obviously, we just have some leash laws right now, laws that protect the welfare of, of our community. I think we need to be a little more extensive, a little more proactive on these laws in regards to the dog, the dog situation that we have here in town. That's going to include potentially requiring microchipping, include but not limited to that, potentially require microchipping and potentially ordinances that provide for fees associated with animals that are not spayed or neutered within our community. In, in surveying other communities around us, it seems as though Elkins is getting a good handle on their dog problems, it seems P. Ridge is getting a good handle on ours, or on theirs, we need to get that same handle on ours. The other thing that we hope to accomplish by, by writing these ordinances and putting these into place, is we hope that in, in talking about it and conversing about it and coming up with a game plan, it will give us an ironclad sheet in which we, a check sheet, if you will, in, in, in what our, our, our dog catcher can, can attain to, and there's no questions about anything, it's all black and white there. I think it's gonna help tremendously. There may be a couple eggs to crack, so to speak, right now on the front end of it, but I'm telling you, it seems as though some of these ordinances that I've been reading into, it seems as though they have had a huge effect in a positive way on the communities in which I'm getting some of this information. So we hope to be doing that, hopefully, that's something that we're gonna get done this year. We've also worked with Alice Jackson and Animal Shelter, Mallory is back there now, they have, we've, we've sat down and had a meeting with them, we've entered into an agreement. Currently, as everyone knows, Mallory's overran, she's got a waiting list for animals, we need to figure something out, we've gotta have a different outlet. Mallory is more than willing to step in and help us, she helped us with the dog and pups the other day, thank you so much for that, Mallory, that was a Godsend, thank you. However, the thing that we've gotta do is, is, so we, that's one of the reasons I went and visited with them, they're gonna offer us the same deal as far as spay and neutering. Right now, we have $180 fee going up to the, our pause and clause. What we're hoping to do by doing this is take some of that work off of them, in the meantime, it will potentially, hopefully loosen up different avenues in which we can use some of these rescues and things of that nature to help us defer from taking everything to pause and clause. So we're working together on that, we've been working really hard on that, actually. Guys, looking over everything, I think that's about it. Yes, actually, one more thing, actually, three more things. We're gonna talk about it, we're gonna talk about it, and I know it's like taking a drink out of fire hydrant, I just wanna make sure everybody knows what we're doing. We asked Kathy Elliott to help us, we're gonna try to pass the resolution here in just a little bit, in regards to sidewalks on parrot mares, we'll put that up here in just a little bit for everybody to see what we're talking, that's $303,000 worth of money that we're requesting from our dog. The other thing is, I recovered land purchase, and we will have, I'm sorry.
Chelsea Weaver.
Chelsea Weaver, get up and explain to Chelsea, I'm sorry, I drew a blank there now, I, about the outdoor grant for the park restroom, we've got a proposed, we've got a proposed restroom that we're already talking about putting on our park. We went back and forth, as, as everyone knows, and I wanna make it very clear that we have had some significant meetings with Roush Coleman Homes. We've had the preliminary meeting, obviously, we had probably a month ago, guys, is that about right? We met with about 90 people over there, and obviously, there's some, there's some things, and I like it the way Steve puts it better than anybody, they need to lick their cap, so to speak. So I wanna, I want everybody to know here that Roush Coleman, whenever I reached out to him, we sent him a letter, the attorney and myself had sent him a letter, I want you to know that they responded within probably 72 hours after actually receiving the letter, they come in and they sat down with us, they were open, and the dialogue was fantastic. They are willing to help, and they're willing to do some things on their behalf to right their own. That's all we can ask, folks, because legally, we don't really have anything that we can ask for. And I think it all goes back to the way that we do ask for it. And how we've approached this was working in tandem with them to try to get some resolve for some things that we didn't think was finished in the subdivision, obviously, the civil things that the homeowners has brought to their attention. Would love to say right now that I feel like this, this is on the right track. Now, we're far from home, but we're on the right track. We actually took a survey, went out to the subdivision, met with them, we talked about unfinished sidewalks, we talked about some of the drainage issues that we had, we talked about some lighting issues, thank you, Sean, for that. We talked about a couple of things out there, and they said that they were willing to help. Now, whether that is in, in, in a monetary form that they're willing to help, or are them actually doing the labor, that's, the jury's still out on that. But the good news, folks, is, is we've all sat down in one room, and, and we've come up with a, basically, a good game plan and a solution moving forward. To be continued, I don't know where we go from here, they haven't reached back out to me, we met with them last Friday for about, just, help me, two hours, three hours.
Two, three around.
I felt like the meeting, tell me if I'm wrong, you were there.
It seemed like it went in the right direction.
Yeah, I think it, I think it's going in the right direction, and so, anyway, my hope is, is that they will follow through and, and come through on everything that they, they've kind of promised in that meeting. And again, like I say, more continued, or to be continued later on. Does anybody have any questions to make? Again, I know it's like taking a drink out of a fire hydrant, but.
I can just, I would just like to propose a meeting for wage and salary, y'all, the next.
Next Wednesday?
What is that, 21st?
4:45.
4:45.
4:45. I will note that, matter of fact, guys, you, you care to write that down there on that, so we can just make sure that that gets into the minutes, earlier or longer. No.
Mayor, you want to plug in here?
No. No, I think there's, there's a couple of things coming up. I may ask the fire chief to be there because there's something that might concern him, and then the rest of it will be determined.
Katie's available.
Katie should be available. And Katie should be available, yes, sir. Any questions of, of myself? I tried to do as quick as I could. All right, moving on, finance director, obviously, is not here. Pray for Katie, that, that she's healed from whatever assailant her, I guess she's been very sick, so we're, we're hoping that she's maybe doing enough to coming back to, back to us tomorrow. Building inspector, obviously, you've been supplied a report. Brandy, what have you got as far as economic development?
We're about to cover an upcoming resolution.
Upcoming resolution, all right, fantastic. And then you've, you've been supplied a report with the animal, animal control officer. I will tell you, there has been an uptick, and there seems to be historically, from everything that I've researched, seems to be historically around this time of the year, we catch more dogs. So go figure. All right, moving on. Commission reports, they've, they've been emailed along with your agenda packet, Water and Sewer Commission met on May the 18th, and the Planning Commission met on May the 22nd. Any committee reports that need to come before us? None, hearing none? We'll go ahead and go to unfinished business. Guys, this, this last reading of ordinance, if we still seek it, I'm gonna ask everybody, actually, no, guy's gonna take care of that problem for us, I apologize, guy. So unfinished business, ordinance, amending zoning code Title IX, it's proposed 2023-4, they had a motion to put it on its third reading.
I'll move it.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second by Ellis. All those in favor, say. No, we need to say.
All those in favor, say aye.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say a sign. Go ahead.
Okay, by title only, okay. We have ordinance number proposed 2023-4, and ordinance amending Title IX of the street and sidewalk codes of the city of Huntsville, Arkansas.
Little bit of proof of the ordinance.
Have a motion to approve the ordinance. Have a motion to approve the ordinance?
Second.
Seconded that. Sean seconded that. All those, oh yeah. Let's take a roll by all.
Counselor Oof? Counselor Thomas?
Uh, yes.
Counselor Evans?
Yes.
Counselor Rogan says yes. Counselor Michaeler? Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, that's five to zero.
Thank you. We'll just publish that. All right, new business. I know, you guys, again, apologies, we're just trying to cram everything in so we can get, so we can start this potentially, potential funding process. So, anyway, talk about resolution with Vision Zero proposed eight dash twenty twenty-three. We have, it's up here on the screen. Hey, will you pull up that, that, you'll just kind of give a quick overview and a synopsis? This is something that we've been working diligently on, actually. I will say, it's the one with. This is something that Brandy's been working diligently on. I tell you, this, this has been convoluted, but again, like I told you at the last meeting, this is something that I'm very passionate about. This is something that I think is going to be good for our community, and it's going to garner us some potential in improving our streets and roadways. You can kind of just scroll through them while we're talking about them, Wes, if you don't hear. This is for the Vision Zero. We have to, we have to pass this resolution, basically saying that we support what the region is doing. We're also going to have in July or August, a, an updated, our own, our own action plan in regards to that. But what this does is kind of pinpoints our problem areas within our community. It actually went out to Madison County, but it, it does pinpoint it here in the city as well, and it gives us some problem areas. These, these are fatality accidents and serious injury accidents that, that we're focused on. We put in a number to twenty thirty-five. That's what our goal is, and with the, with the financing that we hope to attain by doing this with the federal government, hopefully, we can make a difference in our community and make the streets safer. And we have zero accidents or fatalities by twenty thirty-five, I think is the date.
Just to add to what you're talking about here, what you're looking at on the all modes crash map, this is something that Mayor Dawson and I have been pushing back on a little bit with the tool group, the consulting agency out of North Carolina who's doing this. We had them move the threshold down. They had already done it for Madison County, meaning that when they looked at Benton, Washington County, they, they have a sliding window that they look at like a mile at a time, and they had fifteen fatalities to serious injuries for Benton and Washington County due to their large volume number of, of crashes. Ours, of course, is a little smaller, but when you look at it, we do have a significant amount of fatalities and serious injury. Those are the red dots you see in that area. The thing that came back, we even lowered our threshold from, they lowered ours down to eight. It still didn't pick up, guys. The four dots that you will see between where four twelve business turns off to where it rejoins on the west side of town, those fatalities still didn't show up when you lowered the threshold. So, we have pushed back on the tool group to go ahead and manually include the entire four twelve corridor through the city in our high injury network. That becomes important as we get forward and we get our action plan list and our project list. All of your projects that you apply for in funding in the future have to be on this high injury network. So, we wanted to make sure that that's happening.
Yes, thank you. Brandy? Do I have a motion on the, does anybody have any questions about what we've provided, the information we've provided on this resolution? Okay. A motion to approve the Vision Zero resolution.
Make a motion.
Motion by Steve?
Second.
Second by Guy Robb?
No, no, Steve.
Or Sean Ellis? I apologize. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, Mr. President, do you read? Do we have to read it?
No. Not the resolution.
Okay, all right, good. Good. I'll just take a little. All right, second resolution. This is, this is the land purchase walking trail and the agreement that we put together for the, for Madison County buying the walking trail. Obviously, I explained this to you last month, but we're really excited about this opportunity and, and what it holds for the city in the future. We are, we had said six, six acres more or less. It ended up, I think it's going to be closer to seven acres, going out into the center of the stream and, and different things of that nature once, once he's, once he's surveyed it. But I think six acres more or less will cover that. Do you all have any questions on this, on this resolution, resolution for the purchase agreement and the resolution to purchase the land?
Make a motion and approve it.
Second.
First and a second. First by Guy and second by Ellis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, I talked about this just briefly in the merit report. Resolution for a tax grant, we put this together. I mean, we didn't even realize that we could, there's an opportunity for this. We put this thing together in about two weeks. Wes, will you pull that up? And this is for Parrot Street. This is to give you an idea of what we're, what we're wanting to come up with. This, this corridor here, this picture that we've got, obviously, you know, we've had some mishaps, and we've had some near fatality incidents from pedestrians walking on Parrot Street there. So, this is a twenty-three hundred feet long, twenty-three hundred foot long linear foot project for a sidewalk on the same side of the road there on Parrot, there in front of Granny's Kitchen, all the way down to the twenty-three junction there. That's, that's, that's one aspect of this particular grant that we hope that we will qualify for, and it's putting in twenty-three hundred extra feet of sidewalk that is absolutely needed there. All right. The second picture that is also included in this, this is something that we started whenever they started to kind of decommission the buildings down here off of Parrot Street, where the boards and the, Brandy looking, deal is across there.
That next cozy corner.
The cozy corner, the demolition that's been going on, and hopefully, we'll get some resolve on that. But anyway, that is, we've had some, some school age children fall off because that, that sidewalk is elevated up above the street. We've had some school age children that walk up to the square, some of our high schoolers walking up to the square that have fell off in the past couple of years. I didn't really get any incident reports on it or anything of that nature, but we have petitioned the state in this same grant to allow us a variance and, and put our sidewalks on solid ground down on the street level. That could mean some handrails and things of that nature, but there is approximately three hundred feet to this that would certainly improve the aesthetics of Parrot Street and make it a heck of a lot safer. There where the crosswalk is, to give everybody a perspective, where that proposed crosswalk is, down here or, or over here, yes, thank you, Wes, that is Church Street. Is, is, that's Church Street there. So, anyway, any questions in regards to?
Can we go back to the first one?
Yeah.
So, the proposed sidewalk is going to go on the west side of the road?
Yes, sir.
Is that the same as? That will start at Granny's?
It will start, actually, before Granny's. It will start.
At car wash?
Yeah, right here at the car wash. And go all the way out to, there where T's got left. Yeah, about twenty-three hundred feet there. Lots and lots and lots of work that we're going to have to do right there in front of the cement company, but that can be done. I think the bid on that whole thing, our estimated deal was three hundred, Brandy was it three hundred and three or three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars? Okay, all right, well, that's what we're asking for. So, and this is, this is actually grant money. This is not a match of any kind.
It is a match.
It is a match?
Twenty percent?
Twenty? Okay. Had two, had two, sorry about that, I don't want to mislead anybody. What's your wish on this resolution?
Make a motion.
Okay, second. Have a motion, have a second by Mr. Ellis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hey, guys, next one's a tough one. We've basically done all the due diligence, and the attorney, I'm going to ask that if you have any questions, you defer your questions to her in regards to this next. This is a resolution. I think that we've done our due diligence in regards to everything. Chief, tell me if I'm wrong.
I've been chasing ghosts, as you know. We have possibly one last long itch effort to get a phone number tomorrow to a relative that he may be cohabitating with in California, so that will be the last of the last.
Did you arrest somebody there?
I believe my shift dressed somewhere last night. I'll have to confirm that.
Okay.
I know we're out.
What was it?
Trespass.
Trespass?
Yeah, it was a relative.
As we've done our due diligence, we've been doing this property and.
And that person had been given numerous warnings.
Just remind the counsel and the audience, when did this start?
Oh, I don't even remember. It's been.
Six months, six months ago. No, to be fair, about four, four and a half months ago.
I, I think I have that she was, there was a ticket maybe around February.
The house had been vacated for probably right, a little over a year now, maybe fourteen months, fifteen months, and we had dealt with numerous issues there at that point. No one, no one cohabitating there that has any rights to be there other than their friends or family or whatever. We've asked those people, those individuals to produce any kind of legal document, anything that we could, you know, move forward with and allow them to be there. Nothing was ever produced numerous, numerous times. I mean, I'm talking twenty, thirty times.
Just, we, we, we read anything in the newspaper?
We did, yes. We did a two-week ad in the newspaper and the notices.
I, I will make one last effort tomorrow if the phone number comes in to make the phone call to wherever it is in California to see if that person is.
Is, is what we do here today, is this going to start the thirty-day process window, or is what we do today and?
I apologize, I'm, this is my first, well, I've been to these, but I was about probably ten, the last one I attended. So, I don't know how all this works. I am Katrina Scott. I am the oldest sister. Well, I'm, my mother is Roberta Decker. She passed away in March of two thousand sixteen. I realized by listening to you all that you're talking about six oh three Kane, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I left the property, actually Huntsville City, in two thousand eighteen myself, and during which time my brother, Jason Leftwich, and his wife, current law, wife, as far as I knew it, my father, who's still living, knew my brother has been in and out of there. We, as a family, my brother has, we have personal drug issues with him. He's been on methamphetamines since he was seventeen years old. He's been in and out of prison. He is currently, we had a, a complete family intervention, and he agreed and went to Pine Bluff Rehabilitation for six months to a year. I have actually tried to stay at the property and find James Decker myself. I'm really not sure at what time he left. Him and my brother and Jessica Leftwich were living in the house as far as we all knew, until James Decker did leave the property. And tracking him has been insane. I have been in contact since I was in contact with the water department, maybe two months ago, I attempted to get the water turned on. I have been working on the house, but it's been winter time. I came back in October to take on, it's just, it's an embarrassment, honestly, you guys. It really is. Financially, it's been a big deal. It was sixteen hundred dollars just to fix the gas lines. They are now fixed, ready, like he was, says to have the gas turned on. The exterior, it's a damn shame, excuse my language. It's terrible. Anyway, as a family friend, my grandmother gave him the property to build that wall on the side of the property. I'm really the only one, I haven't let anybody really know that I'm there because it is embarrassing.
Katrina, do you have any way of getting hold of James?
I am in contact with his mother, Cheryl. She's not being helpful. She has been through extreme loss. Her son was killed here somewhere in Arkansas. She's also lost a sister. She's pretty old. She lives in California. What I have been able to find out from her is that she said that James lives thirty minutes down the road from her. I can't remember the county. I apologize, I did bring notes, but my glasses broke. I have to see the eye doctor tomorrow.
Maybe in the interest of time.
Yes, sir. Help me here.
Would you be willing to meet with me and Ms. Katrina tomorrow and see what, we can make one last effort to get in touch with him, to relay to his mother this is going to happen, if he doesn't contact us and makes some major?
Mr. Scott, we have to have proof.
Yes, sir.
We have to have proof of who owns the property.
I understand, yes.
The proof that we have is he, he is the owner that is heir to it.
He is, he is the deed holder right now. My grandmother owned the property. It's been in my, my life, my whole life. It's actually the oldest house, the first house ever built on Kane Street. I love that historic stuff. And.
I think the issue though is.
Yes, and we will, okay, and I was also told, I'm researching this because this is all new to me, and I'm really doing it by myself, and financially, it's, it's a lot. But I've been told that I can apply to the state as next of kin because James Decker is legally, can, he was hit by, he lived in California when he was eighteen, he was hit by a truck and has a metal plate in his head, and he is legally.
That's a very long process.
Yes, I know, but I was told that I can apply as next of kin, and because I've been paying the property taxes, keeping them up, you know, and stuff. Right, and it's a time thing.
So, can we?
Yes, yes, in agreeance with whatever we need to do.
I'll tell you something real quick, I just want to make sure. Mr. Decker, that's who we, is that not who we sent the notice to?
Yes.
Is, is Mr. Decker have warrants for his arrest?
I believe yes, Mr. Mayor, warrants, yes.
Okay.
Pay, pay fines, stuff like that.
And he is the legal?
Technically, but there's also, I will, I will slug, get a copy of the will, my grandmother's will.
So, the will does not matter in that situation because the deed is set up to be James Keith Decker and Elaine Robert Decker as husband and wife. So, when Elaine passed away, then it immediately went over to James Decker as his sole owner.
Oh, he goes in and changes or modifies the deed?
He can either modify it.
Proof that he has passed and it goes into probate.
How long has it been since he's left?
I'm really not sure. Like I said, I have not been in Addison County.
Do you have any idea?
A year, about a year, from what I've been.
Now, and, 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 Mr. Scott, just so you understand, we went over there, and there is a, and we need to get you, supply you, you already got it. If you've been paying the taxes on it, then you already got the information.
I have.
That we've submitted, that, that Chief Shin, Chief Thomas, and everybody went over there and done the inspection on that. You understand that that property is not habitable.
It's not legally.
I do, and I have been, I have a list at this point of what has to be done. I also, already before this happened, have, I have pictures on my phone taken from, you know, of each and end of everything I'm facing on the exterior. The yard, I'm working with Ms. Nancy. She at the recycle center recently, who also said, she was supposed to be here tonight, I thought she would be, is going to help with having some, some volunteers help to, with a truck and trailer to get the outside trash gone. There's like a lot.
So, again, and there's the time.
Yes. Oh, okay. Absolutely.
All right, speaking of which. Speaking from a construction standpoint, I have 25 years of construction experience. It will be much cheaper to tear down a building than it would be to fix that one. I'm just telling you, that's the hallmark fact. If it's, if it's, if it's taken to the ground, cleaned up, it's still his property. He can still pay what he's owed for the demolition and then come back and go build another house. It's still his property. Am I right?
That's correct.
So, this isn't the end of the world. This is something that is in the best interest of public safety. It has to be built.
Yes, I understand, sir, and you are correct. And this is something that personally I've been discussing with my family, with my dad really. I'm the only one, um, you know, that gives me good advice about all this and we have been building, um, you know, looking at costs, so... Yes, sir.
Advise us on what we should do. Can we read the resolution to go ahead and not put a definite timeframe on it? Change the resolution? What do we need to do here?
So, I mean, if we read the resolution, once he is served, then normally we have 30 days according to ordinance. I would say if you were wanting to extend that time, probably not read the ordinance, maybe give, you know, another deadline. But I think that would be up to the council and how they would let...
Well, 30, 30 days would be July the 12th? Should be 28 days on June the 10th. So, we'd still be within the 30 day timeframe if something's going to change. Right?
Yeah.
I mean, if we pass the resolution tonight, he would have, I mean, 30 days to resolve the matter. I think with Todd, I don't think it would be possible.
Right, so I'm saying this in order, there's still, and, look, I'm just trying to be rational here. It, it's possible, but we, in reality, it's probably not gonna happen. So, even if we read the resolution tonight, he's still gonna be within the 30 days before our next meeting. Before our next meeting of the city council. Right?
Yeah, I mean, that would be, except to y'all know that, but absolutely.
Miss Scott, the thing that we get into here, and I need to go ahead and, and tell you similar situations. It is never our intent. No. We are responsible for the safety and welfare of every citizen. Whenever we get complaints in regards to vectors, whenever we get complaints to the sewage, whenever we get complaints, and I won't go into detail, but whenever we ask these gentlemen to go in and step in harm's way to go in and inspect the house and they come back and they give us the report they gave us. Miss Scott, with all due respect, it's almost a little too late to, to be stating your case now. This has been a process that has been going on. With that said, it is not, it's up to our council to decide that. So, I wish you the best and, and I, and I hope that you may, maybe can get some resolve from this, but it's, it's really up to them on, on, and, and us, what we decide to do moving forward. The thing that we don't want to have happen is we don't want to get into another situation that we had on, on Hopkins Street with the last, uh, um, that was the farthest to save the lease and the fact that it took us almost nine, 10 months and we kept on issuing. So, there's, there's precedents that's already been set, Miss Scott. And unfortunate for you, that precedence is, is it takes, uh, we, we gave the gentleman 10 months period of, of time, the last going round to this thing, and we had no resolve. We ended up tearing it down anyway. So, I, I, cast on up your, whatever your pleasure is on this.
Well, and, and legally, from, from our perspective, we're, we're looking at, we need to hear from the landlord, the person who really owns the property. So, in lieu of that, and we don't, and we don't have that to be able to address this tonight, I don't see how we'd not go forward with your request.
I think we should have, make sure it's made.
So, we have a resolution? A motion by Steve Ford?
Second.
Second by Sean Ellis. All those in favor say aye.
You want to do that by aye or...
Don't you, we want to, we want to voice vote?
Good.
Aye.
Alright, all those opposed, same sign.
So, so that means they got 30 days, right?
Correct. We will, uh, Todd will serve a certified copy.
I will attempt to serve him.
Yeah.
We're not saying that it's a done deal. I mean, he's still got 30 days to respond to this.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So, you've got 30 days. This is, we're not, we're not starting this, Miss Scott, tomorrow. You've got 30 days. So, work on him.
Okay, I'll be there.
Okay, moving on. Uh, we'll, we'll, uh, bathroom, Wes. Last one. Is a, uh, this is a resolution for outdoor recreation grant. For a park restroom. One of the things that y'all had kind of, uh, told me before we started anything else as far as that part goes is that we need bathrooms down there. We need restrooms down there. We need, you know, that's, that's obviously something that we need. Randy, by the way, your portable will be down there tomorrow morning.
There they are.
Unfortunate that we didn't have them. But anyway, long story short, we're, we're proposing on the, Steve, come here out here, on the south end of the park. We are proposing what you see in front of you in regards to a concrete, a Vegas style restroom, similar to that that they have at West River Springs. The other thing that Scott and I talked about is the common area there between the, is the first bathroom, is a garage area that, that, you know, the park is kind of down underneath the hill. Sometimes it's cumbersome to get some equipment down in there. We asked them to extend the size of this, um, of this facility so we can have some common storage for tree trimming and, or, I'm sorry, for chainsaws, lawn bores, things of that nature. And that's why we got, to where we got there. Do you, do, do we have anything to add? Do you have anything to add to this?
I can just kind of do an overview of the grant.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys. Like I said earlier, my name's Chelsea Weaver and I'm a community development coordinator with the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District. I won't bore you, but I'll give you a little bit of background. We were incorporated back in the late 60s and that was primarily to help our local governments, county and city governments with finding, accessing state and federal funding. Randy came to our workshop back in April that we, uh, the Arkansas Department of Parks, Heritage and Tourism, we hosted it at our facility and that's when we kind of started discussing this. So, anyways, this particular grant, it's a matching grant. It's up to $250,000 that you can apply for. That does not mean that they will award that, if that's what you're asking. Sometimes I have seen them award less than that too. Just depends on the amount of funding and the amount of applications that they award. It can be used on anything that's considered outdoor recreation. And bathrooms obviously support that, so that is included in that. There are certain benchmarks and things that we have to do. This resolution was obviously one of those. They had to be done by July, so that's kind of why everything's moving along pretty fast here. We also have went ahead and scheduled a site visit depending on what you guys decide tonight, July 12th for the parks manager to come up. His name is Mike Bragg and actually look at the site and get his opinion on everything. Randy, can you think of anything you'd like to mention?
As Chelsea mentioned, this particular grant we're applying for is their matching grant. It is a 50/50 match, just so you all know on, on the cost.
Chelsea, in kind donation?
You can include in kind, yes.
Or, I'm sorry, in kind donation. Scott, so that means if we do a lot of site prep, uh, we talked about this already in regards to the water and sewer part of it. That will help us establish our 50/50. Let's say that the building's gonna cost us $100,000. It means we gotta come up with 50. It means that we can, we can get there really quick by using our labor and our, and our equipment here within the city to get to that point, so...
Yes, and we would need to include that in the budget, how much that part. They look, they do look at that different. Cash does get a higher priority on that, but they will include that.
Do they use, like, basically the foundation of payment to establish the grant?
Yes.
Who better to ask than you? You know that.
We've done that a time or two.
Donations?
Yes, we can do donations. Again, the way they look at that structure when we put together a proposal, they don't score that as high just because that's not guaranteed.
Okay. Any more questions for, uh, Ms. Chelsea?
And if there's any pub, you know, trying to get public comment, if you wanna put that on the social media, the city's social media or anything like that, we can take and, and show that as part of the proposal as, as far as what they're wanting. And if the, the project doesn't fit into this year, you know, keeping that for the future is always helpful. Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you, Chelsea.
Make a motion, will you go forward to that resolution?
Got a motion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Evans. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Resolution carries. One last thing before we get into announcements and our tournament. Another lady that's happens to be here, her son is not with us here on the council position today, but she brought up a good, something that Todd, I would like for us to discuss at some point in time in the Parks and Rec, um, deal, uh, in, in regards to awnings over our, uh, up there where the softball fields are. And I explained to her kind of where we're at. We kind of moved all of our money to the baseball fields this year. But is that something that you would put on your, on, on your technical system to look at, maybe putting in awnings over there?
It was discussed. Pre-COVID.
Okay.
And then, um, you know, it was, there was no further interest shown here, so we did go with baseball.
I'd like to add this because, I mean, no more, no more than the cost is associated with it. That is something that we can do and make a drastic difference up there. Especially somebody with fair skin that may have, may have had a battle with skin cancer and things of that nature, it helps out the medicine.
Yeah, I mean, if we can do maybe one, one year, one...
Absolutely. I promise there, I'll bring that up to your attention. Okay. Announcements, correspondence or comments? Water and Sewer Commission meeting Thursday, June the 15th at 4 o'clock PM. Economic Development Commission meeting Tuesday, June the 20th at 8:30 AM. Planning Commission meeting Monday, June the 26th at 6 o'clock PM. Uh, obviously, we've got Fourth of July fireworks show. We've got some resolve that we've still gotta do on here. Some, some rules and regulations that we're gonna have to look at for that. Fixing the parks Saturday, July the 8th at 7:30 PM. City Council meeting, obviously, Monday, July the 10th at 6 o'clock PM. Armored Market, I think that thing gets bigger every time they go up high there. It's fantastic this year. Armored Market is open Tuesdays and Saturdays, 7 AM to noon. Anything else that needs to come before council this evening?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
A second. All those in favor go to the house.